August 27th meeting. Director Phipps, could you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Here.
Councilman Trolinger is absent. Councilwoman Bryant Ward is absent. Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. If I could ask everyone to stand and please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the approval of the minutes for a regular meeting in the closed session on August 13th. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, as well as the closing, the closed session on 8/13/2024.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to our public comment. If there's anybody who would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and please keep your comments to three minutes less. Seeing no one would like to speak this evening, Chief, you are up for your monthly report. All yours.
Any, we submitted the report. Were there any questions?
Just a comment Dave Jenkins Ward for, just again, Chief, I think can't speak for everybody, but I really appreciate the community outreach and the community engagement. This, this, it seems like these reports are showing more of that, which is great. So I just want to say thanks for doing that and it, for me, it does make a valid point. And it does, as we talked earlier, it does hopefully educate some folks about the effectiveness of your leadership and the force here on La Plata. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a, a quick question on the calls for service to the box stores, hotels comparatively, because there's nothing to really compare if it's, it's up or down, it's just month to month by location. Is there increase, decrease? Is it just, is it too sporadic to, to spot any, whether there's a trend up, trend down, so to speak?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think we're trending down. I mean, from what we were running at some of the hotels, we're down significantly. We still run calls at the box stores, the medical center that are time consuming, but we're not running the number that we were in the past.
That is good. And how has the first two days of school been?
Quiet. We like it that way.
All right, good, good.
I can't speak for the SRO, but I can tell you for us, it's.
That's always a good thing. Well, thank you very much and congratulations to all of your officers for all their accolades. It's very nice to see. Appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you.
All right, next up will be Director Harrington. Come on down. All right, for planning, any questions for Director Harrington on her report? Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Harrington, again for a comprehensive report. And I appreciate the, the land development overview, GIS mapping. I just had a, I guess, a question. Is it difficult or is there another way to slice this apple by showing, because I know on the table, next, the next page you have a table or spreadsheet. Can they be linked to the GIS where these, these projects are and what stages? Or is that the same thing here on this map?
We're working on that. So that will be a functionality in municipality. It's just not quite there yet.
Okay.
When I tried to map it in there, it was a little spotty.
Yeah, I mean, and I know you've talked about the foresight. So I think that's a great educational tool to link, link those two. And I guess that'll somehow, if you can do it, link it to the, the monthly update that you have on your web, on your, on your web.
Yes.
I mean, that'll be a way to link the two together and they'll be able to click to it to see it or not, or as a separate link.
It will be separate, but I'm sure we can find a way to make sure that it's easy to navigate through.
Because I, I've seen other communities do that and, and I find it very informative because, because I use that when folks call me about different things and I refer to that.
Yeah, we would definitely need a lot more staff generally, yeah, when they, when they have those, the county, they have a whole team.
Yeah, they do. All right, well, thanks you and thank you. And then, so the, the municipality, is that still causing you issues to get it implemented, the new software package?
It's not causing any issues. It's just lengthy to try to have, you know, it's, it's mainly me working with the consultant.
I wasn't trying to cast blame out of despair because, because I know it's, I know you switched and that's going to be a great function again for the community and, and the folks to tap into.
Yeah, it's just taking me a little longer than I'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I don't have any either. Thank you. All right, Director Garner, you are up next. All right, any questions? Director Garner?
Thank you. Go ahead, Davey. Just real quick, thank you again for the report, again, comprehensive. So you're gonna, you think you're gonna begin paving operations sometime in the fall?
Yeah, late, normally towards the middle, end of October is normally what we shoot for.
And I'm trying to remember the highway user fund revenue was kind of a little higher or still pretty good, but.
I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 700,000 this year.
Okay. And so hopefully you'll be able to get some notification when you might start. And I know it's weather dependent, but hopefully you'll be able to tell communities when you might start.
Yes.
Give them some idea, because that was really helpful last year and earlier this year. I got a lot of folks saying thanks for doing that. It was really helpful.
That's our plan.
Thank you.
Just, I had two, or a question from somebody on Washington Avenue. There's two fire hydrants that have out of service on them. Is that the county or is that?
They're the towns.
Okay.
The plan is, we have to, it's so much that needs to be done with them. We have a few throughout the town that are out of service. The plan is to, is to put it out to a bid and have contractors come in and replace them.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like a valve that needs to be, that can be swapped, okay?
Yeah, they need total replacements.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great, and thank you. You're doing a fabulous job, you and your, your team out there. And I appreciate you going through the neighborhoods for the sidewalk evaluation, as well as the storm box.
I was gonna, I was gonna update that. I know the councilman, Howard had asked her questions. As of right now, the proposed list for stormwater boxes and the adjacent sidewalks of those, there's 45 on the list and 37 are in Agrocoia. So we can let Councilman Trolinger know that. I know he's been getting a lot of feedback from Agrocoia. And the sidewalk list is about 25 sections that need to be repaired, so. But they are, the fall procurement, they need to put out the bid, so.
Well, thank you. You guys are doing a fabulous job. And it's, once it gets a little bit cooler, it will be so much nicer out there, but thank you very much.
Follow-up question. Why so many in Agrocoia? 37 out of the 45?
Agrocoia started in early 2000s. And it was, at that time, it was the plan of the HOAs to take care of the maintenance of stormwater. But since the state regulations come on, I think about 2012, it's now state mandated that the municipalities take care of everything. So they really weren't properly inspected, installed or any of that. And the town really never inspected them because the plan was never to take them over. So now we've taken over messes, what we've done. So we did write many in Kings Grant last year, so Agrocoia is where we are this year.
Is that something that they should have brought up to standard before Trent? I mean, and that's 2012 is going back a long time, but.
It really should have been, but nobody really pushed the issue, so.
Okay.
And we took the right of way of the roads. They're within the right of way, so we, I think we just took it all, so.
Never a dull moment?
No.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes, yes. Great, treasure. Any questions? You have, go ahead.
No, I have a question. Thank you again for the comprehensive report. I'm not sure I can, it's the table, I guess. Let's see, it's on page 82 of 161 is the table.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I didn't bring all of the tables with me, but I can definitely take your question.
So it shows the departments, FY '24 amended budget, the total expense by the end of June, budget remaining and then percent remaining. So at the bottom line, it says town, total townwide, it says 7 million, 7.4, 22.5%. So that's gonna, how to ask the right question? So is that gonna reduce the fund balance to balance the budget for FY '24? Or how does it affect the, the end of the FY '24 budget? Or does it?
It does not. It's just where we, we landed. I'll have to look at the exact, the exact idea that you're speaking about. But as far as the budget, the budget amendments were, were made. And then that balances the budget, which are up for adoption this evening. And then that's no further. We complete our audit and then we're done.
Because I would just, just I guess, I guess the question is, so does it affect, does it affect our fund balance?
FY '24's fund balance has not been affected with the current budget amendments, as I read them.
But we had to use a fund balance to balance the budget, right?
And I would have to just, to confirm what I'm saying, and when the FY '24 balance, budget was adopted.
Right.
Yes, fund balance was used to balance it at that time. The budget amendments made at the end of the year are just to ensure that no department is unbalanced. Again, just kind of bringing that back to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You're doing a great job.
Happy to be here.
All right, Director Phipps. Which questions do we have for Director Phipps? Is it any?
I have one. Ordinance 2414, town personnel vacationally. I don't refresh my memory. It's in, I don't remember anything coming.
No, that was on the agenda when I did the report and then it came off the agenda.
Oh, okay. That's why I don't know anything about it then.
Right.
Good call.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Phipps. Question, you refer to a, you're in the process of revising the ward map because of the census. So what's the process to approve the revised ward maps? Is it through us eventually or?
It, it will be with you finally for the ordinance to approve the ward maps. But first it's going to the Board of Supervisors of Elections on Thursday, Thursday night. So they'll review that and look at the numbers that we put together. Actually, Director Harrington did most of the numbering. I just did a lot of pros and bullet points. But we'll look at those numbers and see how, how well the new ward map matches. According to the code, is it contiguous, is it roughly equal numbers? And then the four quadrants.
Okay, and then assuming then it comes to the council, it has to be adopted before you release the election cycle information for 2025?
The nomination package will be open to the public on October 1st.
Okay.
So on September 10th's meeting, we, we have it on the agenda to review that ward map. And hopefully, if the council agrees with the recommendations of the Board of Supervisors of Elections to do the first reading of the ordinance, adopt the ordinance at the next meeting, and then we'll go into the election cycle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing. Thank you so much. And Director Kennedy, do we have any questions for HR? You have, go ahead.
Thank you again, Director Kennedy. So, so you have revised, and can I see you're, you're advertising for the Town Court. So you've done a review of that description and duties between Director of Legislative Affairs and the Town Council, I mean, Town Court position?
Correct, sir. I worked with Director Phipps and the Assistant Town Manager to review and to go over that and come up with a more robust vision of what that role is going to be. And I think we're really happy where it landed and we posted it this afternoon.
Great, thank you. That's a big help.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate all your hard work. All right, next on the agenda is Legislative Bond Initiative with Director Phipps. And you all should have received the LBI. This is the time. And I know, Councilman Winkler, this is your first time, I think, with an LBI. Usually what we do is we try to submit something to our delegation to ask for some type of funding that we may not be able to receive any other way. And we have exhausted all other avenues on that. So we reach out to our delegation to see if they're able to help us. And one of the initiatives that, after looking at some of the ones that we had submitted in the past, Director Phipps did a very good job of going through all of the guidelines for submitting an LBI. And she crossed off things that could have been possibly on the list, but it didn't meet all of the guidelines. So as the information that you have received, the one that came to be was enhancing our beautiful Will's Memorial Park up there. And Director Phipps, I'm gonna let you take it from there.
Well, Councilman Winkler, if it's any consolation, this is also my first time working with a Legislative Bond Initiative. So straight into the fire. The memorandum that was attached to the packet was derived from a, a letter that the Town Manager sent through Cornerstone for Legislative Bond Initiative in the previous fiscal year. It did not make it through. And that letter included the Will's Memorial Park Amphitheater and Trail and also the Firehouse Museum. So neither of those projects went forward. We're now starting a little bit earlier in, in the process. So if you looked at the attachments, like how to request an LBI, these won't actually go into the Maryland State Legislature, General Assembly until January. So we needed to get that process started now if we were going to have any chance of getting a good package together. So this will go through CGI and, and then they'll help us package this and head it to the delegation, the Charles County delegation for consideration. This particular project was, it seemed like a timely thing. Councilman Trolinger had mentioned something about the, the state of Will's Memorial Park and playground. And certainly I've been down there many times myself and I would not want my kids playing on that playground, honestly. At the same time, we were all working with the amphitheater and trail through ARPA funds. So we had that separate account, funding identified. This seemed like a good fit to continue with the master plan for the redevelopment of Will's Memorial Park that we've had on, we've had on, on the shelf and on a desk off and on since 2011. So hopefully this will help us move forward a little bit.
What questions does council have on this?
Thank you. Well, thanks for doing this and, and you're absolutely right, the earlier the better. And just as a little background, I was here when that report was done and I still see the architect, landscape planner, I see him at MML all the time. We talk a lot. Anyway, so what, what brought this to the top in terms of priority versus the police station, for instance?
Well, one of the, if you look on, I think it's attachment two, whichever one was the, well, the guidelines for submission are more specific about it. But on how to request an LBI, they had a, they had the priorities for, nope, I have it backwards, for what would work and one of the, and what wouldn't. So prioritization for municipal and governmental projects, for example. Prioritization for funding is typically, typically given to projects that do not involve municipal government, local police department or fire department buildings. So that was pretty specific. And we're like, well, okay, that's out. We did look at the Firehouse Museum again, but there were some ADA compliance issues that I know Councilman Winkler had already discussed with our town attorney. So we didn't explore that because that's already something underway and that may be something we could look at again next year.
And just to piggyback on what you asked about the police station, we did submit a request.
That's why.
Rejected by, because I didn't know it didn't follow these guidelines. And so we pushed it, we tried to push it through as a request and it was dead on arrival because it didn't meet the guidelines on that.
So when would this go to the delegation? September or October?
That timeline, I'm not sure of. September, October, I'm, I'm not sure. Did Cornerstone have guidance on that? I, I just fill out the paperwork, so.
And then.
I think it was last year, it was the end of September.
Right, I remember that. And then I, I would assume it would behoove us to be there and present to give a presentation rather than, because that personal touch means a lot more. And then as part of the package, or can you also add the fact that we're working with, that the county purchased the land next door for La Plata Farm Park and we're gonna have a connection with them?
Absolutely.
And the trail, because again, that's called partnership and collaboration.
And.
And that certainly would seem to be a positive way to frame it as well. Partnership, collaboration and they're kind of mutually supportive facilities.
Absolutely.
Right, okay. And then, and then just so you know, I, I did reach out and communicate with Chairperson Kelly and tell her about this as well.
Oh, fantastic.
Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Well, hopefully she's for this project too, because she was also on that master plan.
Oh, yeah, she was here. She's been struggling, I mean, so we all have. And I see Michelle shaking her head too. So thanks. And again, I appreciate the fact that it's earlier the better, so we get ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Get a chance to revise it, hopefully.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Winkler?
So, and, and because I'm coming into it, you know, a lot of, a lot of legwork has already been done and I don't want to take any steps back. But, but the one concern, I understand, is a master plan that had been, or the thought process was, was commenced in 2011. So my question is, is that, is, is what the design planned for still relevant in 2024? And is it worth proceeding with, which I'm assuming it is? But I'll, I'll ask that question only because of the, the timeframe. But the next question is, Councilman Trolinger emailed some questions regarding collaboration on an MOU with the LPYSA, because it looks like in the, in the package, the removal of the soccer field. So how does this impact the MOU with LPYSA and the use? You know, were they contacted, were they consulted? Or do you have any background? I mean, I don't have any context of exactly what he's looking for, but I certainly want to ask his question for him.
Certainly. The, I know the LPYSA has been coordinating with Parks and Rec Commission. So, I mean, between those two pieces of information, between Victoria, the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission and Councilman Jenkins being on there, knowing what the master plan is, I, I have to assume that they know that the, that development, that redevelopment is in, in the works. But also, to your point, we may find that the original redevelopment plan isn't going to work for what we want to do or what we, how we want to take this forward. So it may be that that master develop, that development plan that was done in 2011 could be adjusted.
Okay.
So that.
And that's really my concern is that, is that if we're just asking for the money and then we can still flex it of what the plan, the original design plan, we can still flex it to meet our needs today versus what was originally thought of in 2011?
Sure.
Okay.
And what we were proposing was the, the entryway, which would involve paving. And I'm, I'm sure Public Works is thrilled to hear that. But the, also the replacement of the, the playground, which wouldn't change. So the one that's on, that's there at Will's Park right now, it would just be replaced with a newer one with a, more accessible.
Excuse me, the MOU with LPYSA, is it just, because there is no actual soccer field there. I, I can't remember.
No, there's not.
It's just a grass field, right?
It's actually a baseball field or a kickball field.
It was a baseball field.
Yeah.
Played there as a kid.
My son played flag football there, so it's a multi-use.
So it's just the MOU to the, that they have access to it for practices or anything like that, correct?
Some, what I remember, yes, the answer is yes, and then they put up gold. And then they have certain times that they are there and then they are responsible for me. I think maintenance, certain.
We cut the grass and if they want to strike the field, if they want improvements, it's on them.
Okay.
And then just to follow with Councilman Winkler's question, also about the master plan, the number is what, like 500 and something thousand dollars as a request? So you're gonna scale it to what that, that potential list on the master plan talks about? I mean, because I remember it was a pretty big number if you do everything in, in that plan, that 2011, it was a big number.
Right, and, and we may find that 570, 575 won't be enough.
Right.
In, in which case we would, we would prioritize the playground, which needs it much more than a new entry. And I mean, parking is, is also a, a need. But as far as prioritizing how we would do this, if we do it in, say, phases, playground, parking, new entry.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask.
Right, yeah, that's the real question, right.
Phases. And with that too, I think that we have to be prepared when we do go speak with the delegation. Should we choose collectively to move this board as an LBI? Is that we have to show that we have exhausted all other avenues, which we have. The park and the park and rec grant, we were not granted again this year. So that is one avenue that we can go to. And perhaps when we look at funding, if we, they always like to see if we're going to match something or if we're going to contribute in any way. And I think with the money that we're using for ARPA for the amphitheater, it shows that we really are enhancing that area. Because this used to be, when it was first built, I was told that it was the premier park in the area. And now this has not, it's not shining like it should. And I think that we make this a priority for outdoor space and having the kids outdoors and definitely for the upgrading that playground area.
And then the fact that it's contiguous to a county park.
Right, and to make it.
They bought that property and, and we were on a, we were on a committee to help the county look at those priorities and that coordination of trails.
And to make it accessible for everyone, because right now it's not.
Literally right before this meeting started, we got email from, was it DHCD? About green space equity. And that particular part, actually a good part of La Plata falls into the, not even underserved, but overburdened area. So there's, there's new funding floating out there for that, so.
That's exciting. So, Council, I'm going to ask you this evening if this is an LBI that you would like to move forward to present to our, obviously this is just the infancy stages on this, but it was just to gauge your interest. But to move this forward to bring to our delegation in September or October. Councilman Winkler?
Yeah, I'll proceed.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes as well. So thank you very much for the, the work that you have done on this already. And I think that, boy, our residents are surely going to benefit from all of your hard work and collectively our work too. So thank you. All right, brings us to legislation, ordinance 24-13. It's all yours.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, ordinance 24-13, fiscal year 2024 budget amendment.
Second reading for consideration of adoption. An ordinance concerning amendment to Town of La Plata fiscal year 2024 financial plan and budget for the purpose of amending the Town of La Plata fiscal year 2024 FY '24 financial plan and budget and all matters generally related thereto. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-13 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance 24-13 as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I'm not sure this is the right question at the right time, but I forgot to ask, maybe you can come back to it, but the status of the pension process. What, can we do that later? Okay, right, okay.
So if you have anything pertaining to this?
No, I do not.
Okay, so I have a motion and it's properly seconded, all in paper, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I am an aye as well. All right, new business. Going with you, Councilman.
So actually, two things. We have a new historic plaque going up on Willing Helpers Hall, designating the great work that they've done in the community for, since, I think it was 1903. And then also the new plaque is being formulated for both tornado recognitions, the 1926 tornado behind Milton Summers. So we're going through the wording on that, so that should be coming out shortly. But I'm actually looking for council approval for the renomination of this Jane Hobbs, as recommended by the members of the Historic Preservation Committee to. Sorry that Councilwoman Bryant Ward and Councilman Trolinger can't be here, but, but it is, I'd like to get that done and, and taken care of as soon as possible.
I will make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would second the motion.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much and please thank Jane for willing, her willingness.
Absolutely.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Again, just thank you, just to reiterate, I, based upon Director Kelly's presentation on the, on the Will's Park, I did reach out to the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission and I'll follow up with her with respect to the, the MOU with the soccer club as well. Also, now I lost my train of thought. It'll come back to me, sorry. Oh, in September, in a couple of weeks, we will have a quarterly meeting of the Tri-County Council's Pedestrian Infrastructure Advisory Committee, which I'm the current Chair. And we'll have to start beginning to look at regional priorities, so hopefully the LaPlata will have their priorities and, so we can present that because that does eventually go to their infrastructure committee, but then that goes to the state. As, as the partner of, of transportation. Now I remember the other item. I just sent the council and, and the staff an email I received about a couple hours ago from the District Engineer, State High Administration about some information they were sharing with respect to the Charles Street intersection with Hickory Ridge Lane, also the traffic signal at Willow Lane and Charles Street. And then the study to look at the access pedestrian at Kings Grant and Maryland 488. So I forwarded that email to you, council members, about an hour, hour and a half ago. And I won't repeat all that, it's pretty detailed, but I, and I pass it on to Ms. Minor, Chief, Mr. Garner, Director of Planning, so everybody, and also our transportation consultant, Jamie. So they have that information.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And for my report, tomorrow is our last farmer's market on Wednesday for the season. So please go out there and support local and we will keep our farmer's market open on Saturdays until November. We've got, if you missed Friday night's concert, it was our finale for the Friday night summer concert. They were amazing. It was quiet fire and they literally had everybody up, well, not literally everyone because I didn't get up and dance because I didn't want to be on video, but most people up there dancing and they were a really, really fun group there. And kudos to Colleen and Director Garner for your, all of your employees that had supported this all the summer and Chief Schinner, your employees who have supported this Friday night. Fun, fun time all summer long, so thank you both for that and to Colleen. We, she is, Colleen will be working hard on our next event, which will be the Fall Festival. But there are a lot of community events coming up in the next month or so. We've got the Lobster Fest by the Rotary and, and the Hospital Wine Tasting Event and then the Bounty of the County, which is not called Bounty of the County anymore, so I apologize, it's, it's on the tip of my, tip of my tongue, but it is another event that, that we have locally. So please go out there and support local. And thank you all for being here. And with that, I move to adjourn. Thank you. Meeting done.